You weren't there.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock. It's time to begin our monthly meeting in Mount Pleasant City Commission. Time I call a meeting to order. I would ask that each of us please stand on the invocation by Steve Rempro and the pledge of allegiance by Calhoun Lee, please.
I talk about his... Our gracious heavenly Father, we just come to you thanking you for another wonderful blessed day that you've allowed for us. We just thank you for all your goodness you provide each day. Tonight, as we do the business of City of Mount Pleasant, help us to do it in the best manner that we can and guide and direct all our thoughts and goodwill toward this city and help each and every one of us and guide and direct us each day.
Amen.
Let the ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America, as citizens of the world, stand up and welcome the Lord, the individual, the liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. The quarter, please call the row.
Yes, Mr. Granby here. Mr. David.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Ambassador Chip here. And Mr. White.
Yes, sir.
Alfred.
All present. We will start with item number four, approval correction of the minutes from the prior meeting of June 19, 2018, opening for receipt.
Mayor, I'll make the motion when the first I read over. Very good.
We kind of triple check those because there's so many public hearings and tax write and everything else, so.
Kind of matching back the study.
There have been motion to approve, there's second. If you second, you mean discussion. All in favor, say five or say aye.
Aye.
Hope like some of the minutes are approved. Item five, award presentation appointment. Anything there?
We don't have anything there.
Item six, completion review of unfinished business from prior meeting.
We don't have anything there either, Mayor.
It's not long. Item seven, monthly report from the mayor. This time, want to thank the city's participation in making Thunder Over Murray a good success in this first year of that participation and a joint effort between several agencies to put on this thing. We probably had close to 4,000 people out there. It was a great day, awfully hot, but it was a great time for us and we look forward to making that hopefully an annual event and maybe shift around the weather a little bit. I had asked that we presented tonight the Mount Pleasant Water Distribution Standard Operating Committee.
Y'all have this in front of you?
Yes. And you might wonder why. I just planted on my desk and I first pushed it back and I took it home and I read it and I underlined it. Don't pay attention to my own mind, that's the way I've done all my life. I'm a... Somebody's important to me and some of my... Not being important to you, but I go back and hit the highlights of things when I try to... I guess, I asked if you take this home with you and get in your easy chair and just kind of read over it. You know, we hear a lot of things about our sewer department. It's just, you know, gotten a lot of attention and rightfully so, it should have had a lot of attention. But also, our water department, which this previous administration built us a fine addition to a treatment plan and we think we got things well under control there, but I want to congratulate the employees that work and I watch it. If you read, if you look at this, the error they're required to do so many things is just unbelievable. I was hoping Donnie would be here tonight, but...
You told me about this today and I told him that you were going to do this today and I'll have him watch the video, but he wasn't scheduled to come.
But you just look on page two, see the things that are required to do constantly. Nine distribution samples should be sent state level for microbiology examination each month. Sample's got to be taken no less than third and windy. They're living with a book of rules and regulations that are so thick and so unthought, but the end result is we'll have a water system that people can turn this ticket on and not be afraid to drink. And, you know, it's just, it really blows my mind what these guys are doing out there.
Our water is safer than bottled water.
Yeah?
Yes, absolutely.
And all these things new and structured and repaired water lines, they've got to meet all these specific things, they've got to flush them, they've got to just go through things and just unbelievable. I know a conversation I had with our fire chief not long ago, it appeared in here and I wouldn't know what it was, I didn't see him, but the 500 gallon per unit, 20 pounds per inch, that's actually a part of the code and I didn't realize that's where you were getting this from, it's coming out of this thing. Water. So, look, if you would look that over and I wish we had a way sometime, I'm always wishing for a paper, because I'm not going to have one on this wall here. Yes, it's...
Maybe.
Well, it's maybe, I mean, there's just not enough advertising to keep it going, but if we could put this somewhere, people could look at it, it's just amazing what we're working on. Anyway, that was nice.
I agree with you that to them, a lot of it's so routine, but it is an awful lot.
The mayor, to add to that, I'd like, I never had this experience in the past two weeks with two different things, I had to call Donnie and also with the help they gave us with the water lines out of the Great Indian Park, I mean, on top of everything else they were doing. It was like, no big deal, yeah, we can do that and apologize for being late out there in the middle of that water break in Main Street. I was like, but so nice and compliant that they're doing too. That makes it really nice, but an explanation.
Mount Pleasant is blessed to have an employee and I'll tell you, it's really just the top all the way down, we've got some resident employees. I saw guys cutting grass today with weed eaters around the liberty lines and, you know, they didn't have to do that, they don't do that everywhere, but it does. We keep our engines, our city's looking really nice and it really makes a lot of difference. I'm going to recommend those to you who may be here in a couple of years, a couple of years or whatever. Mount Pleasant has a very good ordinance on litter. I came within an inch of bringing into this commission before the election back four months ago, yes. We would have enforced that, we wouldn't have any signs on lightways. I called Columbia to see what they were going to do, to see if they were going to be active with it. I called by the city manager, they were not going to be rigid with it this year like they were when we came in with walkers over, actually went too far. But these campaigns out there, the expensive candidates, but put them in private yards and I think I ordered them to do it for yards, give them private property, so. Don't think about that. It won't hurt anybody, nobody has to.
Mayor, if you don't mind, one more thing to your water policy. About a year over year, it's a six and a half percent improvement on the water entry versus solid, and that if you really look at the green scheme, six and a half percent, that's be two over two million gallons of water, one percent, almost the same amount of process. So, they're doing a lot of great work.
I think a lot, and I think a lot of it is just a little trouble with life. Anyway, any questions or may you like it? That was very... We will. Item number eight, monthly financial budget report.
First it's been June, you don't have a report yet, it'll be a couple of months before you actually have a report. I think perhaps it'll be end of August to get everything finalized, so maybe September meeting before you get... And then it'll be preliminary because you won't get the auditive report till the auditor finishes in December. So, but with that in mind, today I went to the, to Goodness World, to a legislative update, Intact put on. Alicia Hodges was the speaker and she's an excellent speaker and I put on your desk a couple of the slideshow that was presented. Forgive it, thought my notes, that was just thoughts as they went through that I wrote down. Some, many of these don't apply to us, many of them do, but the main thing is the, one thing that we will need to be bear in mind is that small cell legislation did pass and with that, when we think about our downtown revitalization, we're going to really need to think about that legislation and actually develop, they suggested we develop ordinances and we would have to develop an aesthetic plan and that would help limit some of what they could do. It would not totally, it pretty much gave them free lane, free rein to put them wherever they want. They can actually move the poles, they can replace your poles, they can take the poles up, street lights, they can take them up and replace the whole pole if they choose to. And it's very, she suggested that, we read pages 25 through 36 over that, and she said when you're going to get hit with this, it's going to be whenever you have a big event like the Thunder Over Murray. She said that's when you will see it. I think she was thinking about Bonnaroo specifically when she was giving the presentation, but she said anytime you have a big event in your town, that's when you may get hit with this. But if you have some of these ordinances and some of these plans in place, it will give you some notice and limitation because as it's written, they don't even have to tell us when they pick them up, they can just come out and put it on poles, not ever tell them unless we pass an ordinance that says that they would have to come in and get permitted.
It's very deceptive to work small cell, they're not small.
It's the size, I think it's like six cubic...
Yeah.
Six cubic feet, I think. And she said it's a lot larger than you think it is.
Oh, absolutely.
So, anyway, it's the legislation that we definitely need to follow up on and I thought that you would give you the information straight from Intact. And then, of course, there's other legislation that they talked about today, but it was a very good presentation, so.
Yes, so Alicia Hodges is the attorney for Intact.
She used to be the comptroller.
She was the comptroller, yes, yes.
In open record.
She's very good, yes.
Yeah, she's...
She is very good.
The comptroller.
Oh, yes, and the comptroller accepted our budget, so it's now can be finalized and we'll be posting that on our website.
Which is unusual, it's usually August before they do that, but...
Yeah, it's pretty quick, so we got that, that exception.
It might be good if we could have, maybe Columbia and Springfield, we could maybe have a little seminar on that thing because it's going to affect all of that, if somebody wants to speak. If you read the book, it's probably not going to get hit some, but it's very, it's a tragedy the legislature sold out there these days like they did on the twelve inch pole. They're taking all, they're taking all the rights away from this town, you know, it's like, you don't have no right.
And we get very little, it allows us a few things, but they're very, very small in comparison to the...
Thirty thousand dollars or something.
Yeah, I forgot exactly what it was. She mentioned them today, but then they're in here.
Very small.
But it's something that we need to definitely look at.
What are you talking about, putting underground lines and then they can come in and put overhead things on, actually on the ground lines, that's really pretty. I thought that looked like they're nice.
Some of that was just too blurred. Some of it's just too blurred.
It's some of it's not.
It's...
They don't have to, if they want it temporary, but if they want it permanent, they can make it permanent.
Yeah, they can.
I wonder if we're going to design codes that we're passing? That's what we're suggesting, is that we do design what they call an aesthetic plan.
Okay.
Then they would have to go through that process. But they can't go on what we already passed into the code, right? The code, so we're rewriting.
Right now, they can't.
Yeah, right now, they can't.
What she's saying is we need to pass something requiring them to go through that process.
Right now, they can't.
Legislature, that's what we're saying, just individually, right?
But the legislature is allowing us to do that. That was part of the compromise, that was the one little bit that we missed, that Intact did it for us, the ability to be able to do that. That was the one little, they do allow us to do that. It's very, like I said, it's a thick book, but, and they recommended that we read those pages, I wrote them on the front, and some of your light reading there. Have any other questions?
Okay, the chairman will make a motion, please, for the acceptance of the financial budget report.
My motion is accepted, Mr. President.
Motion denied, accepted, and they second that motion. Second. I would like to say five or say aye. I would like them, the natural board is accepted. Moving on to item number eight, monthly report from the city manager.
Mayor and commissioners, I take all the reports from all the different departments to create the state of the city that's available the first of the month and online, so you'll have that. You have one out there already for July?
Hey, I guess, I guess, why, that maybe, I've never seen a life suspended, life deprived of, or...
But then your report...
Yeah, it comes and goes, it's just...
I mean, they just turn the lose and, because I'm sure they have insurance, right?
Uh, well, someone does, someone don't. They issued, actually issued a citation, we don't think they're suspended life.
I didn't know if they, those types, hey, insurance or not, it's not just logic or suspended or whatever.
But if they're driving.
Yeah, that's not a question.
The problem with it is, you can't stop them unless they have the U.S. and they've got to blow in the machine.
Unless we already know that they're suspended.
Right.
If that's why, and most of the people in town, we usually know.
You pretty much know who they are.
Or if they're stopped for something else, not a suspended life.
Correct, yes.
Any questions for the city manager? Move on to number 10, latest special reports from all the city departments or committee that have...
There's no report except to say we're a million, million one hundred richer than we were last meeting from the two CDBG grants that we were awarded last week, so.
Why don't you elaborate on that, just a second, maybe someone here doesn't...
Sure, so every other year, the city's allowed to apply for a CDBG grant at $525,000 and we always do. For the first time last year in 2017, we did not get them, so we reapplied and we got the city's $525,000, which will go towards the sewer improvement project that we're all working towards. And because the county has a different level of demographics and income levels, typically when they apply, they don't get awarded, they haven't had, they've been denied a couple of times, so they allowed the city to apply on the county's CDBG and we were awarded that one as well. So each are $525,000, so that's a million fifty, and all of that will be going towards sewer. And like I said, in 2017, we received word that we got neither and that was devastating, so happy to know that we got both of them this time around. Any questions? Happy to ask, and so we, and last week we got four, four new grants, two for sewer.
One of the things that I hope all of us reiterate to the public and, because I've had several people say, well, you got this, you got this for the dog park and this for spin class and that, why aren't you doing this? To make it clear that it doesn't stop us from doing other grant things, those were done and mostly Thomas did those through Parks and Rec with the help of other people outside. He's not spending all of his time doing this, he has other people helping do this and it's not costing anything and it improves the quality of what we're doing to other things, but it doesn't interfere or stop and it's surely not costing us. They, and that, and Thomas has pulled in other people too to help as well as the other persons and committees and that and departments to help with other things. We have lots of people involved in helping writing grants, I knew those things, so if you know of any other grant, we'd be glad to hear of them, but those, all of those fail, especially once that thing costs.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number 11, new business. Item A, ordinance 2018-120123, first reading and ordinance to men, title 17 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code related to refuse, trash disposal by the previous chapters one and two, and their time to replace in title 17, chapters one with new chapter, change of refuse and replace in title one, chapter two with a new chapter, governing waste, black, and junk, the bulk of the item in the yard.
Mayor, commissioners, we have an original ordinance for the book dated back to 2015, is that correct on the...
No, the original ordinance is from 1985.
Okay.
For the refuse ordinance.
Yes.
It had some updates, I think maybe the last update might have been in 2015, but that was just a port...
So, just, so you're aware, we just finished our rate study that included gas and sanitation and our sanitation rates have never been passed in the form of an ordinance, which I firmly believe need to be passed in the form of an ordinance. So, you've got a sheet in front of you that is a summary of the ordinance, that's basically what this ordinance accomplishes for all of you to look at and I'm happy to have these available for anybody, it's here outside in the public seat too, because we want to make sure that everybody's aware of exactly what these ordinances are doing. But we certainly need our monthly fee to be passed by the governing body. If you want to see what we need, we're hitched along, but, or no, anybody here, the commissioners all have it, thanks. So, we haven't had our sanitation rate in there, there's been some confusion on if somebody wants an extra container. I think in the past, we've called it a rental, we called it a rental, we have charged sales tax on it, we do not want to charge sales tax on it, so we're just calling it an additional service fee because we're picking up an additional container, we're already out there. So, this has the same rate that we currently pay right now of 1750, it has the additional container at $10 and it's not a rental, it is an additional service fee. And we lowered some of the commercial blue cans because we were charging residents 1750 for the blue can and we were charging commercial 40, the same price we were charging for a dumpster, which makes no sense to me at all. So, we have in here, the commercial is at 25 and also they need an additional can, it's $10. Obviously, it goes into quite a bit more than just trash pickup, but this is the first time that trash pickup rates have been put into the ordinance. It goes into bulky and brush. We have actually set up a separate phone line that people can call into and leave a message when they need bulky and brush pickup to try and get it more organized. I'll let Cory give you a little bit more detail. This is something that, like the mayor said, we don't have a paper, how do we get this message to the public, something that impacts a lot of our residents and we want to make sure they're aware of it. And I don't know the best way to do that, but we're open to ideas on how to do that, but Cory, you want to highlight some of the top things?
What, in the ordinance or how I got here?
So, what's in it? Well, probably a little bit of all.
So, this, Mount Pleasant, like it says, in the municipal code, had an older trash, it was called refuse and trash disposal, and there were two chapters of that ordinance that is very old, I don't think it was followed at all, and then Mount Pleasant, a couple of years ago, passed a policy, and so the policy was passed, I don't know if it was passed by resolution.
It's only, no, it's only in the minutes of a minute, yeah.
It's in the minutes, and so they've been following that policy, and then this ordinance is also on the book. So, what I did is put those together into an actual ordinance that would be included in the code, also took some guidance from Columbia's current refuse ordinance, and they combined refuse and bulky and junk all into one. So, that's how we got here. So, there's not really a lot that's new as far as, it's not what, not the current policy, it's just now finally in a ordinance the way it was supposed to be.
Reduce the writing, yeah.
So, highlights, I guess, is basically it requires everybody to keep their property collection of trash in bulk also. It explains where the containers are supposed to be put, when they can be out there, they can be put up 7:00 P.M. the night before a trash collection day, and it has to be before 7:00 A.M. the next day, and then they need to be removed by 7:00 P.M. the following day. So, it really gives you 24 hours to have your containers by the road, and then after that, you need to pull them back in.
And it mandates the program, it's not, you can't opt out of it because if we have a lot of people to opt out of it, we can't operate this program. And there are probably less than 10 right now that for some reason have been allowed to opt out of it and they would not be allowed to opt out of it anymore. If you are a residential home in the city of Mount Pleasant, we have a residential trash pickup program that you will participate in. You will, you will, it's mandated. We, apparently, when this was first, when we got the new blue cans and people were told they were charged 1750, several, and I'm saying less than 10, it's not a large number, jumped up and down and for some reason, people waved them. You can't have the program if you allow people to opt out of the program. So, it'll be those, less than 10, I think it's actually less than 5, they would start paying at 1750.
So, what do they do with their trash?
Probably take it to the dumpsters or, or take it to the zucchini center and put it in that trash can if we remove for that very reason.
When did this happen?
Oh, before me, years and years.
When we got the blue cans.
So, it was probably 2015, 16?
We had a, we had a, we had a commercial place doing it and they were taking their trash to the convenience center. The convenience center no longer would let them take it and they said, well, we didn't take it in here. I was called and I said, well, you can't do that, you're... So, that was, they had opted out, they had come up here and I said, we had opted out. So, they got a dumpster. Now, they can recycle their cards, wortens, bottles and stuff like that, but they cannot take their barge for their, and that's the same thing residents were doing, they opted to take their own trash and dispose it.
They can take it, but they have taken chicks off, they waved, they do, they...
Well, the residents didn't have to, because you can take actually commercials, but you could take residential. Well, now, we're saying, no, when Michelle was here and when we first got the trashcans and caged like, there were fewer then, 10 that were doing that, and then we opted in. We also let them have their own containers, when we should have changed it, when we made them all have the same containers and said, can't do away with that, for some reason we didn't do that, when we made standardized containers and said, you have to have this blue container, you can't...
And what we're saying now is we're not leasing you that extra blue container, we're charging you for the pickup.
I went to take, as, as like my mother-in-law, she was with us for a couple of years, but I still have to pay 17...
Have you ever had, Chief, have you ever had anybody find, have the garbage can, forty garbage cans stolen?
Uh, not stolen, we've had some, come up visiting and we've actually located on this down the street.
Do you find them?
Just been here.
I was looking at that section in here where you're responsible for your trash can and if somebody steals it, I think that's a little unfair, but...
I agree.
But you, every once in a while, you'll see a city of Columbia can here, there's people taking them when they move, and that's not legal?
That's 17-112, repairing and replacing refuse containers. See the lost, stolen, vandalized refuse containers for gum.
You have a...
If it's not ours, then what should I pay for?
You have a, you have people delivering a sweep down the street and then start strolling and there've been, and I've called Steve, there was one on Mount Pleasant Pike about a quarter of a mile from where it belongs, and he went and picked it up and my neighbor reported there stolen and it was down the street and all of a sudden, he had two trashcans out there, so I called Steve and said, you might want to go check and see his trashcans back, because I picked it up in the back of the pickup truck and put it back down by his driveway. So, I don't know how many we've had, but...
We had one that was used for fireworks.
Yeah, we had one melted, I couldn't...
And they're, and they're going to...
It was melted on the 4th of July.
Used for fireworks?
Really?
By accident.
Well, I could, I could say charges, eh, would the people do it themselves or would it?
They're not going to admit that.
Somehow it happens.
Then they're liable, so you can't deal with that.
But how many have we had stolen, Steve? Not very many, not very many.
We've had very little trouble, period. Well, I mean, it would... Well, I mean, it would really rub me wrong if somebody stole my.
Millions.
There you send your bill for.
Well, most of, we haven't had, we haven't had, most of them have worked out, Mayor, that they've been, they've shown.
So you, I guess, when y'all think that's okay.
And this is, this is common practice, I mean, it's.
You have a building, why not?
Pardon?
You have to, a man can have a building, why not?
Yes. But it is common practice, because it is equipment that the city buys, and they give to use, to use for their refuse pickup.
My second question relates to that refuge containing seventy-five dollars, and if somebody wants a second one, you're going to charge them ten bucks a month?
Yes.
The range?
No, we're charging for the service to pick it up, we're already there, and now we're picking up a second can.
Okay, so that makes them pay twenty-seven fifty?
Yes.
A addition?
No, just twenty-seven fifty total.
Twenty-seven fifty total.
Seventeen fifty plus ten dollars.
We do what Ms. Pinker does, and she tells me, and says, I'm using your trash can, but that's my.
Your secret.
You think about it, you think about it, if you want an extra can, that's just a dollar a day.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's not bad to have trash picked up at your house and haul a lot, for a dollar a day.
I had someone complain to me the other day that we, someone in our community who lives right here in the city, said we should have it done twice a day, twice a week like we used to, and I looked at him and said, really? We, we pick it up four days a week, and you're asking, I said, get another trash can if you need it done another day. Well, that'll cost you ten dollars or more. I said, do you realize what it would cost us to run trash, besides we don't have enough vehicles to do one trash twice a week like we used to do? But I think it's an awareness of making people aware of what we do, and to be aware of picking up containers and taking care of them, and taking them off the street, and being grateful for not having to haul your own trash, or like some of these people have to pay, you know what the garbage man costs, charges, to pick up?
He's gone.
Thirty-seven fifty.
I have minus thirteen dollars, and I have to provide my own.
Big town, so by that way.
I would love to be able to have one of the containers.
Well, in their defense, the, the, the landfill cost is on a.
Oh, I'm not.
I know, but I mean, it needs to win on us.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
About eight or nine dollars a ton.
I do.
And the city needs to do a better job to communicate with its residents on what, what these rules are, because there's, as we said before, there's not a way to get that message out. So we'll have a new person move in, they know they have a can, and the weekend they move in, they have their can filled with two bags beside it. They didn't ever get anything that said you can't have two bags beside it, so we're not doing a very good job of communicating that message, and we need to have something that, when you come in and have water changed into your name, and we hand you something saying, as new resident, these are some things you need to know, and we needed to do a better job of that, for sure.
Pack it, I've asked for.
And I thought you said you were going to do it.
No, well, I can do it.
A welcome package, I said, that's what, a welcome package.
But when an information package.
It could be a welcome package.
With a lawn and department, a whole nine yards.
We could work.
It's on this, it's on this, well, everybody gets understanding, everybody can navigate that, so you may get occasions.
I have, I have a question about, on the bulk, only two of the bulk. But going back to the other, is, a lot of landlords, they have their trash can with it, a lot of their tenants were taking their trash can with them, and it made the tenant, the landlord, aware of that to make sure that their tenant left the trash can, so that was some of the missing trash cans that they were bussing out. It got landlords all to say, hey, trash can stays here when you leave, but that was some of the things that were missing, too.
Any other questions or suggestions or comments on chapter one? I don't like the seventy-five dollar fee if it gets stolen. But what? If it gets stolen, charge somebody seventy-five dollars, they didn't, I mean, it wasn't like they went out there and took the solid side to cut it in half, you know, on their own way. I fuck with that, too, but I mean.
Well, if we have an official police report, and we believe it was stolen, I, you want to make sure, you want to make sure that everybody can't say it was stolen.
Well, then we need to put in one forty-two that the city manager has discretion to waive that fee.
We'll be glad to do that.
I don't like putting that in there and letting that, I think it just should be understood that you can, and it makes them hesitant, too, otherwise, they're going to say, well, you can waive this if you want to, I don't know, I think that's, that's not going to be a good one.
You can't regulate common sense.
But it has, we need, we have to have a file, a police report, and then allow a police report, not be sure of all the police reports and not pull the truth.
Imagine that.
You're getting into some stuff there.
Dude's responsible for it.
Well, I figure if you leave your trash can on the street, you're responsible for it. And if somebody comes in my yard, then I'm going to file a police report, but when you leave it out on the street, like, over half, not half, but a third of our trash cans are left on the street all week long, until the pickup after pickup.
I mean, a third?
A third.
You want a survey on that?
I go down the street, yes, sir, I do, because do you not have, before you got here, you, you, those of y'all that've been here, well, help me on this, was this not a major headache when we started doing trash cans?
Oh, yeah.
And we had people.
Four blue cans?
The blue cans, well, no, no, when we got the blue cans, because we had people here crying, saying, how can we, what's the date we're doing? Finally, I said, you know, it's sort of like in my classroom, this, the principal comes in and says, this will be here by next Friday, and you break the rule, then you suffer the consequences. They're grown up responsible, supposedly adults in our community. It says, it says take the trash can off the street, take it off the street.
Cory, did you not say seventeen? It had to be up at seventeen?
Twenty-four hours.
Well, you don't take a ride.
No, they're.
I fixed it, I violated.
She can't do it, can she? She can't do it, can she?
My trash can's off the street. Her's off the street behind her fence.
Is that off the street behind the fence? Yes, sir, it is.
I just wanted to make sure that she, so she can put her trash.
She walked over and I put it down in the morning, I get a message, this is me, I'm coming over to put it in.
And then I know she's out there, I'll put her trash can.
She puts her trash can.
So the rule about.
We say that it's not about taking cans, thank you.
The rule about having times on there is not new. The rule about, the rule about not, about having times on there is not new, it's just in an ordinance now, it's just with something in the minute.
But it wasn't written before?
It wasn't, it was just minutes and minutes.
Well, I had one, you know, I've had someone complain to me about somebody not picking up trash, and I thought, where is it coming from? But I never, never read it.
It absolutely needs to be in the ordinance.
It went out in a written notice, but it wasn't in the ordinance. Steve did put it out, there was a written notice.
We have a copy of that, if you need it, if they were, the policy, we just sent it twenty minutes.
Bill, you want to make a motion, or you want to? I think we, the way the ordinance is written, we need to discuss chapter two as well, because it's all within the same. And I'll go ahead and tell everybody right now, I'm not for chapter two. I'm not for chapter two, I've already had the conversation with Kate, and y'all said at some, here this afternoon, that, uh, the problem we have is, is that we don't have a real effective way to notify our constituents and the citizens in this community about something that's going to completely change the way they will live their life, and that is that we're going to start charging anybody a hundred dollars a week, or refuge being from a storm or whatever, if we've already been there three times this year. And I don't know, I, I'm just going to tell everybody right now, I'm not going to be a party to that unless there is plenty of public input before we ever cross this, because I, I'll tell y'all what I told Kate earlier today, the people that can least afford this are going to be the people that are charged the most, okay? And then secondly, this group of five million ladies up here are going to either say yes or no to this, and then Steve and his group is going to be the ones that catch all the dickens over, because you got a new phone number, and Steve's going to have to go, well, you know, Mr. Jones has already been over it three times this year, I have to come over now, and we'll have to pay you a hundred dollars. And my concern is, again, is the people that are going to be affected the most are going to know the least, and the people that are going to be affected the most within our operational part of our city are going to be the ones that are affected the most, they're going to be the ones that's catching, no, I'm not paying you, get on over here and pick it up.
And I was thinking about that after.
I was going to call upon the property in the back of the, in the back of the yard.
I was thinking about that after I talked to Vice Mayor today, too, maybe there's a way to have a grace period, and then anybody whose, uh, house that we've gone to to pick up will automatically get a flyer that specifically says, you know, we picked this, this up, we want you to know what the rules are, and you have a grace period before you start charging six months or something like that, uh, in, in an effort to get the message out there. I also think we could possibly do some postcards and things like that, but, yeah, it's a problem getting that message out, because people are not knowing that we're looking at this and passing this, and then we come at them and tell them, if you're going to start paying for things you haven't paid for in the past, that are over the top services that we can't provide without charging, I mean, we really can't. It's just how to get that message to them, so they understand that.
We're not going to, I'm thinking about this.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm kind of like Bill, I mean, I have, I have a problem with it right now, probably going, probably activated for, I, um, spring, you're saying that I did the same thing, I had a conversation with the city manager yesterday, that it, it's a problem everywhere. I see, I mean, I don't personally believe that it's city responsibility, and so I might take my couch away, I just don't think it is, but that's, that's why it's here, might be okay, but, uh, we have commercial people who, renters, I mean landlords are commercial people, both whether they like it or not, and they're putting in, when nobody comes out that's on all that junk, got it on the street, well, now, where do you carry the couches and beds?
What's on?
Okay, so what are we paying a ton of that?
Thirty-six dollars?
Yeah, thirty-five, fifty. Some occasionally, according to what it is, they'll charge forty-seven dollars a ton.
And we do not, we do not pick up, we don't pick up rentals. We don't pick up rentals.
I know you don't, but.
In the writing that we.
I know you do, but they, I know we do pick them up some occasion, because they, they beat the system.
Right.
Right, and that's just it, and they think that they should be entitled to it, but you take thirty-five, thirty-six dollars a ton, whatever, a ton of garbage, just garbage out of your garbage, get a whole lot more in that landfill than you can with one big couch, I mean, that takes a ton of, that's a, that takes a lot of.
Well, when you go pick up a ton of, of couches and chairs, it brings a lot more trash.
Yeah, that's exactly.
You get a whole load of that.
Yeah, and you've got a problem. So it's costing the taxpayers of Mount Pleasant a lot of money to do this service, I mean, you.
It's costing a great amount.
A great amount. And it's only going to get bigger, and landfills get more scarce, because it's getting harder to permit them, it's harder to build them, it costs more, and they're closing every day.
I don't, frankly, I'm wrong, but I don't think, I'm not understanding you, that the people that's going to cost, you know, the, for the couches and things like that, I think it's generally trash and limbs and things like that, I don't see that, the people that are cleaning up their yards that can't haul off brush and limbs and leaves and that, that's the people that are going to cost, how often do you have a couch or a refrigerator or something like that to haul off, and, I mean, I'm by myself, if I don't find somebody to do that for me, I couldn't even get out to the edge of the street to have it, to do, to do that, and we've got enough people in this community, and I get enough phone calls to help people do that. That's not a service that, that, that we don't have, if you get that, if I do help somebody do that and get them a truck and he's like, I can take it right there to the convenience center, other than a, a television.
Exactly.
I can take that, but I, I can get, even then, there are enough people here in town that we can put them, kind of contact, that is what helps with that. But what I'm looking at is, is the brush, say someone comes and helps someone in the yard, and they put it out, the, under bulky, the yard waste is picked up on that location regular collection day.
Which section?
It's under bulky.
What, what?
Yeah, I'm going to turn yard waste.
Seventeen two oh four.
Yeah, two oh four, I'm sorry, yeah, collection of yard waste. All right, but if you call, if I put that out and say my collection day is Thursday, you put, you call the day before, if you have yard waste, may I put it out there, do I have to have it in my yard, and then put, say a yard person comes to help you clean up on Saturday, and your collection day is not till Thursday, can you not put it out till Thursday, is that what the ordinance is saying?
That's where, that's where this is written, and that's to avoid couches being at the end of the road all week, and.
Okay, I guess I'm looking at trees, limbs, things like that, that if you had some, I'm not looking at applying visiting furniture, I'm looking at when someone's cleaning up their yard, because you schedule somebody, or you have a storm, and someone comes.
The minimum storm is we have to come bring the limbs down.
Yeah, and you get those limbs out of your yard, and you have it where somebody comes and helps you do that, I think you spoke of that the other day, Bill was having that, and you go, and, and you put it out there, and you know your yard, your trash is not going to be picked, garbage is not going to be picked up till Thursday, and you call and schedule it, are you going to be penalized if you put it out there before Thursday?
We can rewrite it, but the way it's written right now is that.
See, I think that would be, that's the thing I'm looking at, is for, for refuge such as that, that kind of, not appliances and things like that, but things that we are normally.
Yard waste.
Yard waste, and things like that, that you can bundle up and put there, as long as you're not putting it in the, in the street, you know, if somebody's there to help you do that, because those are the things you can't, and you don't want somebody burning it in their yard, I mean, I can burn it at my, my house and get a burn from it.
We can separate yard waste from bulky and say that the yard waste, you know, can be out there a week of, the pickup.
I'm, I'm sort of like the mayor, I think I'd like to see this table, and, and just stuff in.
I don't mind tabling, I would like some direction from you, though it's just not tabled, and.
The term is not tabled, Mr..
Did you talk, yeah, did you get, did you get some of these ideas?
Yes, absolutely. We have all their ordinances in front of us when we're looking at this.
So, basically, they, they have a three-week drag now, I think, on.
They do, I know that. I don't know what you mean.
Well, I mean, they have a, they only come every three weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's, that's what it used to have.
Well, ours is still is.
It's still.
Ours is a week following this, that every week that you get your trash picked up, you can call and get it scheduled.
Well, I think, well, I think we'd figure ourselves if we do that.
It's better than what we have right now.
Well, yeah, and it is better, but, I mean, we've got to do something to improve it, and no question, I can make sure we make the right decision.
Yeah.
I think a week is too late, I think that's.
We don't have the.
You can get it done in a week.
We don't have the system that Columbia has.
No, sometimes.
Right now, Steve.
Can you get to two or three?
No. I brought this paper down here tonight, and Kate, somebody here was protesting the cleanup, it's just, those who can't see, Columbia works overtime and clean up, storm after rain. It also goes in there to explain that they're paying, that they're pulling their sewer department four trucks out to get the extra debris off, they're paying overtime, we don't have four extra trucks, we can't pay overtime, we cannot afford what even Columbia is doing to do this because of our financial situation and so forth, so, and they don't have all theirs up yet either.
No, no way do they have.
No, no.
They got more than we got.
Exactly, and so we're not in this thing by ourselves, and I don't like a lot of criticism about our employees and our government not taking care of something that happens.
And Steve, if any, sending out like, you know, pickup truck, and guys just picking up what they can by hand.
A storm is an act of God as far as insurance is concerned and so forth.
That's not the norm, right.
And, and, and putting grass out and limbs, you, you did them yourself generally, I mean, a lot of maintenance work and so forth goes on, but I'm also like Steve, I'm going to hear the grass cannot be put in the street, and it cannot be blown out of the street with lawnmowers, because it's messing up our sewer system, it's going into our storm It's going into our storm drains, our storm drains are getting over capacitated and the water flow is going into our stomachs, going into our sewers.
Mayor, is it possible that we, we defer this and make us a list for our next meeting session? Because you brought up a whole lot of things for us to...
Oh, well, we gotta do something, I promise you, we do something, we will do something.
And two, if you, really, the grass needs to be banned.
It does.
If you're gonna put it out there.
Yeah.
But being straight, I can't carry it before we do the brush, so you're gonna have to carry it in the west.
But I, I think we can probably go into our litter ordinance and take care of the grass being blown in the street. It looks like it already is.
Oh, yeah, I agree, they need to stop it.
And I got, I've done it myself a time. I mean, I've had a lawnmower, I bet it's...
I saw one, I think, two or three inches deep.
I think it's one of those in the code, in the code, too. Yeah, they, I remember, we watched the...
Well, Mayor, I make the motion that we defer ordinance two thousand and eighteen, page ten twenty-three until the August meeting for research concerning...
Yeah, we may, we may want to have a special call made.
We might want to do that, because that's my big thing, is we, it scares me that we're gonna, the bulk of the population, the people we have here are not gonna know what we do, they're gonna be the ones that get the hundred dollar bill.
And we have no problem with it, but you've gotta give us some direction. We gave it a starting point.
Yeah, absolutely. We're starting point, yes, somewhere.
I'll expect it.
Okay, the motion been made, and I, it all has said, I'm gonna come on left, due to seconded that we defer this from the next meeting or next call meeting to discuss any items that we choose to do. Further discussion, all in favor, say, five or ten?
Aye.
All like sign, that's the motion to defer is passed. Well, it's a good discussion, I think, something needs to be done, something somebody has to look at, so, I think, we'll make, we'll get it done.
Yeah, we'll get something.
Okay, item B, order two zero one eight dash one, zero two four, first three in Austin, meant title nineteen, Mount Pleasant, Mount Pleasant, gas, chapter three, entire replacement title nineteen, chapter three is a new chapter, paying the gas.
And Mayor, Commissioners, this is the second half of the rate study that was just completed, sanitation was the first. And let me just, I'm sorry, go back on that real quickly, as we're putting this off to August, we're also putting off the reduction in the rates for the commercial businesses that I told them was coming, so we need to make sure that we move forward in that because they're the ones that complained about having to pay forty dollars for that container when the same commercial business could be having a dumpster, and I said, if the rate study was gonna result in us recommending that being reduced, so, I know we're putting it off to August, but keep in mind that that's impacting people's...
Well, they actually be paying eighty dollars.
No, they, they...
They don't know, they don't...
No, I'm saying, the blue container is costing the same giant dumpster.
Well, if they had a...
And we're changing that.
If you had the giant dumpster, it wouldn't be four dollars, it'd be eight dollars. Or if they don't...
I'm just talking about small businesses that just need blue containers.
I don't care.
Yeah.
If that's, might explain to them, it's not that much higher.
These are people that fill a trash can that big, they don't need anything else.
I mean, I think it's unfair charge of twenty-five dollars, they're more than merchants now, because I, I think I paid enough taxes, otherwise could've taken care of that. I mean, used to, when you paid, before, we got trash pickled every day, stole everything. So, you know, they couldn't really, I couldn't complain about it this much, but today it's just not working.
Well, the sanitation department is, is somewhat of a pseudo-enterprise fund, it's not an enterprise fund, but it has to pay for itself, which is why we did the rate study. So, I, I got you off track, but I just wanna make sure you know that there are people that are waiting for the rates to change.
Well, there's a lot of you.
Yeah. So the ordinance that you just called out, Mayor, is, is a result of the gas rate study, and the gas company, while many think it's just billowing over with money, it's not. We are doing well in what we're collecting, but in the residential area, we have very little ability to plan for growth and for capital equipment replacement, and one thing that the rate study came up with is that we're one of the very few cities, if any, that do not charge a customer service charge. And in, in residential, typically, the bulk of their gas bill is gonna be heat for their homes, and that is a few months out of the year, and we have no minimum, like we do in water, and that is very normal, we have no minimum for gas, so if you use no gas in the month of August, you get no bill, you zero. And what, what the rate study has said, and what I thoroughly agree with, is we are maintaining miles and miles of gas lines and all of the meters and the tax twelve months out of the year, and even if you're not getting gas in August, we're still maintaining that system, and everybody around us is charging a service fee. We, I have some numbers in front of me, Lewisburg charges eight dollars a month, Atmos in Columbia is twelve, up to twenty-one, depending on the size of the pipe, the, the system that feeds Chappizill is charging eight dollars a month. So this is something apparently we've not ever charged, and so our recommendation is not to increase gas rates, but it is to, on residential, to, to put in a service fee that is twelve months out of the year.
We didn't have this discussion before, you probably forgot, Mount Pleasant did have a minimum bill, Marshall...
I've heard that, yes. We haven't in a long, long time.
I don't worry, got, pray it won't wait, but I paid it.
And it was...
I paid it in summertime, every year.
But it was not related to anything...
It was like three fifty, four dollars a month.
Yeah.
And Mayor, I want to point out, too, we, an issue we are having as well, and this, this minimum charge would address this, we're having, you know, not a lot, but some of us, another thing once every month, that because gas is billed secretly in your water sewer, in April and May, when they get that real, that high bill from heating, if all they're doing is heating with gas and they're not using it for anything else, they don't care if you disconnect it, and so you can disconnect it and go all summer long without making that payment. Then next fall, they're coming back in, paying the payment, and getting it turned back on.
United connection, please.
It's the same.
They don't care about the twenty-five dollars.
The twenty-five dollars, the debt.
Right.
But if you had the twenty, but if you had that, that seven dollars every month, that would trigger that.
Regardless of what you, you're talking about, you're gonna have eighty-four dollars a year.
Would you punish some people that pay it down?
Yeah, that's right.
But we're maintaining a gas system twelve months out of the year.
Yeah, but they still have to film and take care of it.
You message your guys, you're supposed to, like, seven dollars.
Seven to twelve, yeah.
They're still paying for that toll, gas employee, twelve months out of the year.
And their equipment, and replacing their equipment, like any other utility. So the rate study has recommended a minimum of five, and if we wanna have more growth, they recommend that we bring it to seven, which is still lower than the other utilities.
All right.
Thank y'all, maybe I tear the numbers apart. Number one, I have not seen this rate study, and it concerns me that I've not seen this study and I'm asked to do a ordinance.
Okay.
I would love to have a copy of that, please, to see if I have the opportunity to see the study. So I don't think that I'm gonna be able to set a seven dollar a month charge without reading that study and then understanding, all right, if it's, they were, the study, and I, and I'm not totally against this, I just think this is another one of those that we're gonna pass and nobody's gonna know if we're not careful. Is, I would like to see what monetarily five dollars would make, six dollars, seven dollars, eight dollars, nine dollars, ten dollars, by the number of current customers that we have. What's the revenue gonna be monthly and annually at five, six, seven, eight, ninety, ten? Does that make sense?
Yeah, we'll have the gentleman that did the rate study, we were just trying to cut costs.
Oh, he doesn't have to come, I'm not, I'm not...
Well, he's got all that, he's got it on the spreadsheet.
Well, no, but that'll be our information we pay for, correct?
Yeah, but he didn't do five, six, seven, eight, nine dollars.
I'm asking Loretta or one of us, because we know the number of customers we had, and you can multiply times five dollars, six dollars, seven dollars, eight dollars, nine dollars, ten dollars, and tell me what the financial repercussions or actually benefit will be to our community at each one of those tiers, and then that way, I think, as Commissioners, we can make a educated decision instead of us just coming in here and being asked to pick seven dollars. Does that make any sense?
He gave us five and seven, Kate, you say, 'cause he said five and seven, so you're just looking at ten.
And we'll give you all the, the full report.
Yeah, please.
From all, thank you, guys, see you this evening.
I just hate...
Great reading.
I just don't, I just like to read before we do it.
Make the motion defer?
Yes, sir.
What is the motion to defer on the floor, the second?
Second.
Second, make the motion defer from next month, correct?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say, five or ten?
Aye.
All like sign, that's enough, defer from next month.
For everybody's information, Kate heard this before we got here. I told her so.
We're okay with that.
She's never gonna get a question.
Would you, would you send that to us through your results from?
Well, they'll, they're gonna provide it to all of us.
I know, but you're, you're gonna look at it.
Oh, yeah, pretty quick.
No, we don't have to read it.
All right, gotcha.
Thank you.
I'm gonna hear that for you. You got it.
It's not an ask.
I know, you like reading and stuff.
All right, item C, please, resolution two zero one eight dash two eight, a resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, authorizing a payment in lieu of taxes for Mount Pleasant Gas Department for a funding year of two zero one eight dash two zero one nine.
Mayor, Commissioners, these in lieu of tax resolutions should be passed at the beginning of each fiscal year, which had not been done in the past, but we're getting on track, and we, we started last year, and this is for the gas system, and it's a specific formula of what the gas system pays in to the general fund for the in lieu of tax.
We'll be calculating till after the, after the audit, completely.
Do you get the audit in?
We, you, what we do, we use last year's figures until we get the new audit figures, and then we do it through...
Well, I'd ask the question today, looking at the gas report.
You're looking at the electric...
The electric, the electric report, what, in lieu of tax, we do something to get them all, in lieu of tax. It's an estimate from last year. Now, in the last month of the fiscal year, if they're not caught up with what we've estimated, is it put into that?
He looked at the thirty thousand dollars from the June payment to us, and thought that was low.
Based on last?
Yeah. Last year, we had an overpayment, and they, and we did a true-up over the whole course of the year.
So, did we...
The next year, starting July first...
Did you apply that the next year?
Do you know what the annual amount is?
I applied it for last year's fisher.
Do you know what the annual amount is?
I don't remember it off, off my head, I looked it up. Oh, and I can actually, what I'll do is I can email you the, the whole formula, it's like a three-page old calculation, I can email you that.
I think he just saw the thirty thousand dollars.
I don't need to say it, I'm just, it, because it's simply is based on historical data and not current usage, I'm just making sure that, like, with the fire system, not my picking up fire system, but they're paying us in lieu of taxes, and it's basically paying thirty thousand dollars a month.
They are sending us that information.
They're not sixty thousand dollars a year, and if their valuation goes up in this formula, where do they make this up? They make it up to the current, in that year, in the last payment, or they make it up to the next year?
Well, last year...
It's on a monthly basis.
Yeah, it's on a monthly basis, that's what I'm saying. They made a lot of payments based on the...
Last year, when they, we did the two true-ups, they gave us an option to do it anyway.
And they realized they, they have formed their, they know what it's gonna be, and they actually don't own more money, do they make it in the twelfth payment, or do they make it in the first payment of the next year? It's just that information.
They pay it on a monthly basis.
I know, and I know it's about thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But I see what you're saying, what happens if we come up at the twelve month and we're thirty thousand dollars behind?
Well, that's what happened last year, only it was the other way, they actually paid it too much, and they actually gave us the choice of doing it all in one, one payment or doing it over, who are your full payment? Do you remember?
I don't remember.
And we just did it over three or four payments. So we did do a true-up.
It's a formula that we follow, and you, and you end up, you end up truing up the actual use.
I think more of this board understands what they're doing, better off to be, we would never have problems with Mount Pleasant Fire System, I mean, that's not ever gonna happen.
It's figured on a monthly basis, 'cause we're adding to that system all the time, and they, they figure it out with monthly.
But if we have some of these in low agreements with the industries, that I, that's why I'm asking the question, just to get in my mind why, how that is being...
The one in front of you right now that we're talking about is gas.
You like, right.
And that's, I do that one.
She, she figures that herself.
I make a motion that we accept that.
Okay, motion been made, we accept resolution two zero one eight dash two eight, the second. Second, due to seconding, further discussion. All in favor, say, five or ten?
Aye.
On the floor, no, that's resolution ten, right. Item B, resolution two zero one eight dash two nine, a resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, authorizing a payment in lieu of taxes for Mount Pleasant Fire System.
Mayor, this is similar to the last one, this is the in lieu of tax for a power system, and it is calculated by the power system, and it does get trued up based on actual, and it starts with estimated, and again, there's a formula for that as well, and happy to provide that to you, something that we receive every month. It starts, it starts with each year, but it's paid month to month.
That's good, but I think, that's what we, we get, we have to run around, get it right back tomorrow, I'm talking about tomorrow.
No, there's no doubt, yeah.
We don't want to make a part of that.
The water plant this month was eight thousand dollars in electricity. The P A Center was free. Give it right back.
Okay, been due to made in a second, in favor of this resolution, in further discussion. All in favor, all in favor, say, five or ten?
Aye.
All like sign, that resolution is passed, please, for Mount Pleasant Fire System, in lieu of tax. Item number E, resolution twenty one eight dash thirty, a resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, declaring certain Mount Pleasant Police Department and Mount Pleasant Fire Department inventory as surplus property, authorizing sale of surplus property.
And Mayor, Commissioners, this is pretty routine, we're coming to you on a regular basis, when we have property that we're not using anymore, surplusing it, and it goes on gun deal, and this resolution has five items on here that we intend to put on surplus with your approval.
I'll make a motion. I would like my, use, second, due to second.
Like it's about eighteen, six.
I have a question, Parker, you have said you got your Pierce fire truck on here.
Yes, sir.
That's the one we got from Columbia, right?
Yes, sir.
And that's the one that was replaced if we're able to get the grant.
Yes, sir. The only reason going now, I feel like it's very unsafe.
So you're gonna put it on regardless of the type of service, right?
It would, it would hurt our house already if they come back right now.
That's why I'm saying...
I say, that would be a great decision.
That's not a factor for the grant, I follow. And the John Deere will, that's the big piece of equipment sitting back here.
Yes, sir.
And that came through, I guess, on the Army service.
Military.
Okay. First question you want to observe, okay? Chairman, sample, please, all in favor, say, five or ten?
Aye.
All like sign, that is passed, please. Item F, resolution two zero one eight dash three one, a resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, approving an Axon Enterprise quote issued on June twenty, two zero one eight, and the Axon Master Service, the first agreement, Mount Pleasant Police Department.
And Mayor, Commissioners, I'm gonna ask Chief Hay to speak on this briefly, but this is an agreement that over the course of years is a tremendous cost-saving to us compared to what we currently pay, and so, Michael, if you wanna talk about the tasers and the cameras...
Right, basically, it's a five-year agreement with Axon Company to purchase twelve X-two tasers with hosters, with training cartridges and regular active-duty cartridges, and twelve body cameras, and also one-year subscription, each year's renewed, to a evidence dot com, which is a body camera video evidence log. So basically, we're getting twenty-four pieces of equipment for a price of twelve. Body cameras are free.
And the maintenance, ongoing. And the maintenance, ongoing.
The maintenance starts in year two, two, three, four, five. The tasers are renewed every year. We get new tasers every year. We get new body cameras every two and a half years. We get new duty cartridges every year. We get new training cartridges every year. All this is included in the price.
Are there any state bids contracts on this project?
Don't know that there's any on a deal like this where you get both for a price of one. Usually, you get state bids on individually, but I don't know of any state bid on body cameras. No, there's no, no other company offers.
Soul source.
Yes, it's a soul source deal. And I'm paying for it out of drill.
There's many.
What's the guarantee on it?
Warranty.
Oh, they're warranted for as long as we continue to, if one tears up, we send it back, it's into the new one.
Five years.
Five years. Five years, five years after we do this, and we're good to go for five years. That's why I'm staring up selling the front-end loader.
And on the body cameras.
It gets them a lot traction of it.
It gets these ladies and gentlemen a little safer, too. It gets us a lot safer, too, with that body count and those tasers instead of having to...
The tasers we have now, I think two of them are 12 to 10 years old, and a couple of them are four, five years old, and those things are supposed to be updated every year.
Can you tell them what a personal experience?
Down low. Chairman, ten a motion, please. Some of...
Second.
Here, I got a motion here, and seconded. Black man, white. Further discussion? All in favor, six, five, saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, like sign, resolution 2018, due to that, excuse me, 31. Resolution 2018 dash 32, a resolution authorized the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, to enter to consent order and assessment with the Tennessee Department of Climate Conservation case number that U P C 177 dash 0004.
Mayor, Commissioners, this consent order process started, we believe, back in 2006, and this is the last chance we get to get it right on the sewer system, but we are all very well-suited to get it right. So basically, the city made mistakes over the course of years, and the city has now told T Dex, this is what we're doing to fix the problem. They've agreed to it. This is the final consent order. We have till February of 2022. We hope we way ahead of that schedule to get these problems behind us. As you know, we always self-report if we have a problem, which we've done over the past year, and we did have a few overages and heavy rain events, and our fine this year from the state is $750 compared to years ago, $185,000. So we're on track to get it fixed, but we have to update this consent order that will keep us, will be under this consent order until everything is taken care of and is removed, or the deadline of February of 2022.
And the penalty for not getting this done as you go in.
EPA.
The EPA, the T P.
So this is, as you can see, it's written as, it's a lot between the two of us. And it's an order by the state, and we will follow it, and we will continue to work on supplemental projects where there's areas where the system is the old play pipe that we can fix, and just continue to, we've been doing the right thing for quite some time. We did consent orders, just had to get back in front of the game because it was about to expire. And so that check for $750 will go out this week to the state.
Any further discussion about this?
Michael Mowbray, my latest resolution, 2018 dash 32.
All right, the resolution has been, motion made to accept this resolution, is it second?
Second.
Due to seconding, further discussion? Chairman, I will, will call, this is a very crucial part of my history here. Let's first call.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Blanket Chip?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, that has been approved. Item H, 2018 dash 33, resolution revoking the quitclaim B, transferring two tracts of real property located at Bluegrass Avenue, Murray County, authorizing resolution 2018 dash 7, and authorizing City of Mount Pleasant to execute a new quitclaim B with five restrictions, versionary clause, transferring the same two tracts of property, real property in Murray County, construction, building section, part two courthouse.
Mayor, Commissioners, as you know, we did deed this property via quitclaim B to the county. They did not accept it. The county attorney had concerns with the deed restrictions, and at the building committee meeting this month, I attended, Daniel Murphy stood up and said that Mount Pleasant is trying to control what we are doing to a county facility, and they really don't have that authority. And I stood up and said, that's blue rights, which is why we put the restrictions in the deeds, because we can't control what they build. And so, all we're concerned about is the facade materials, which the drawings and the schematics show that it's to be brick. Were removed from the deed, the language that says they need to go in front of the planning commission, because our planning commission has no authority over anything that they're building in the county. And so, I get that, but he also gets why we had it in there, because we don't want a metal building built down there. And so, Daniel, the changes that we've made, he is comfortable with it. He can't guarantee what the commission is going to do, but on Thursday night, the budget committee is voting on the maximum not to exceed two, almost $3 million, to build the courtroom. So this is important, that this goes in front of them, and they have a comfort level, and Cory and I kind of believe that there is a comfort level. We won't know until Thursday night, but I believe that Daniel was probably more concerned than most of the Commissioners.
We, every change that Daniel Murphy has requested, we've made, and it's redlined in that new deed, so you can see every change that's different. Basically, it just doesn't have to go through the planning commission anymore, and all the material restrictions are still the same. Another change, he wanted it to specifically say that the courthouse was to be used for Murray County. It originally said for Mount Pleasant Citizens, now it's for Murray County, which is correct.
Yeah.
Should have been that way the first time. So that's really the, it's several changes, but that's the summary. It doesn't have to go through the planning commission.
The only new is there's a stretch when we started, but we wanted to have some control over what was put up.
Yeah, no problem, I'm sure with the revolution, with the first make of a set, I'll be...
No.
The other change, he wanted to the, to that clause, is that they get notice.
Yeah.
So before, before you just turn, you know, take the property back, that they get 30 days to cure. So that's in the versionary clause as well.
We need to do a second.
Pardon?
We need to do a second.
It's just one, one resolution, yeah. So basically, this resolution is saying that we're replacing the other resolution. No, it's just one.
Any further questions? Chairman, ten a motion, please.
Motion to accept resolution 2018 dash 33 as presented.
Motion to accept, is it made, is it seconded?
Aye.
Due to seconding, Mr. Berry. Any further discussion? All in favor, six, five, saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, like sign, that resolution has passed. Item I, resolution 2018 dash 34, a resolution amended the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, employee handbook.
Okay, Mayor, Commissioners, this is some minor changes that we're making to the handbook that was passed for the first time last year, and I'm trying to find my notes in front of me, where I don't, for some reason, I'll have that most recent. Do you have any help? We added, I believe, four things. So we added out-of-range pay, where it's been our practice, but it wasn't reduced to riding when someone operates, say, a fireman, captain, in the absence of captain, that may be on disability leave or something like that. So we reduced that to riding. This is all in the resolution in front of you. We added the longevity pay, the increase in the longevity pay that you improved the budget that went from $25 a year to $50 a year, and the cap moved from 1,000 to 1,500. We clarified the language in vacation service where it was a bit confusing, where we talked about if you work 10 to 15 years, you get 15 days, and basically, starting your 16th year, you get 15 working days and one additional day for each year. Just clarify that, because those questions have come up to us from employees, even though it's been our current practice. And we're changing, we also are requiring anybody that works with money or in the finance department that they will take a five consecutive days vacation, and that would exclude any holidays. They have to take five days off, and that's a very common practice, many banking institutions two weeks. So just clarifying that in the manual, and then we will adjust table content and the, let's go back in the book, called the...
Index.
Index, to reflect these changes, in case page numbers have changed. So those are the four changes that we made.
I make a motion to accept. Is it made, and due to seconding, we accept that resolution 2018 dash 34, further discussion? All in favor, six, five, saying aye.
Aye.
Let's, let's cover off that line.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Blanket Chip?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
Motion carries, five, six, seven.
That has passed. Item J, approval to construct restrooms at Gardenia Park, 24,000, 325.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, this is in the budget, but we want to make sure that everybody's aware that we budgeted $20,000, and we do have bids, and it's $24,325, so we'll be coming back to you with a budget amendment for that $4,325. The park number X budget does have that money as a result of the sale of that land. This is about going to deplete it, there'll just be a few thousand less, but the Recreation Commission voted this week to move forward on these restrooms as well. The first thing we'll have to do is perk.
Please.
Bill Wivel.
Any idea for overall, who made the estimate?
Bill Wivel.
Who made the estimate? Any bid on it?
Can we have another? No bid.
And it was also he's doing the car.
He did the one in Power Field.
What made overall?
ADA compliance.
He said something about, I don't know if that's already been talked about, whether it's cheaper to go ahead and hook onto the sewer line, or do the...
That one's on septic. A Gardenia Park will be... It never been on sewer stops.
Okay.
Halfway up, that road. So it's definitely going to be cheaper to perk it. Yes, never has been.
That's what I'm saying, like, he said something about, I guess, if you can hire a sewer line to, it would be cheaper than being in the sewer line.
But would also encounter quite a few issues with residents on that road, because the sewer line only goes up halfway up that road, and they would have to be required, if they bid to tap into sewer, the sewer line up the road, because then it wouldn't provide it to the road.
It goes halfway to halfway.
But it doesn't go to the park.
But it does, it goes to the park, and the sewer goes...
Yeah, it probably goes halfway to halfway.
Park, too, now you have road, it's a park in city.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
They don't have sewer.
Some do, some don't.
Oh, okay. Oh, we're not doing it because of money, or we're not doing it because of the water line, or what, or maybe some kind of other way to make sure. It sure does, because I realize they didn't have sewer up here.
Two, the other street does not have it either.
The other street's got a plant.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what's running. Yeah.
It's one thing not to have it on the front line. Another thing I don't have is intercity limits.
There's an abundance of issues like that throughout the city. There's no rhyme or reason to how the sewer was ever laid, at all. I mean, you can be on Greenwood, and the high school is on the sewer, and all the people across the street are not on the sewer. That exists throughout the entire city.
Been on Greenwood, not on sewer.
Correct.
In Mount Pleasant, too?
That situation is all... It is a nightmare, there was no force.
Know that, I wish I had heard that.
It could injure for another day, yes. Man. Reading Johnny for it.
I don't think those people have, they don't have a...
That's really kind of strange, because...
None of the houses on Greenland across from the school are on sewer.
When we put the line in from out to Cherry Grand Park, they went to subdivision out there that caused that subdivision, caused the...
Better.
We all had a pattern there when we came in. You know, you didn't really, they made people get on sewer, well, sewer was late.
The sewer's not available, problem.
But I...
There's no good answer. I mean, that's part of the audit that we've been doing, is why is this person on this side of the street playing for sewer, and this person isn't? Available to this person, it's not available to this person.
Mockingbird's the same way, definitely a Mockingbird's in the sewer. Yeah, I hear Mockingbird got extension when I was, when, and they got, they came to the board, they hadn't been in houses built, and those subdivision, I was driving, we put sewer in under there. And then they came forward, Mike McGowan and Harold Barker came and asked for a wave, and we hadn't been in houses built, and subdivision built over there. And the board were so anxious to get some houses, good houses, and the gate away. I know how that made that.
I played that Greenwood, when it was built, that will not float, and they didn't...
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's just not many easy things to that.
Now, who's doing the sewer survey? You come and tell.
The audit.
The audit.
Yeah, we're doing it amongst ourselves.
Who's doing the inspection? That'd be very interesting.
It is very interesting, very, it's disappointing to say the least.
I'll find out more unless you vote, don't care.
It makes it very difficult, too, for trying to figure out your billing.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion to approve?
I do.
Motion to approve construction at Gardenia Park.
You're making such a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and due to seconding, any further discussion? Okay, now, clerk Caldwell, one, please.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Blanket Chip?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Now, the motion carries.
Okay, that's approval, that's granted, we have a rest study starting in Clark Park. Item K, approval rate study for water and sewer tap fees.
Mayor, Commissioners, this honestly doesn't even need to be on the agenda, but we want you to be aware that we're moving forward, and we are going to do the rate study on our tap fees as well. And a lot of people think that the tap fees, you should just call around and see what others are charging for the taps, but the tap impacts your entire system. It impacts from when you tap into the line, to where you're getting the water from, or where the sewage is going, so it's much bigger than that, so we want a formal rate study done on that. And this price was given to us in October, and they are going to honor that price, and we're going to move forward on that. I want you to be aware of it, $4,500. Sorry, it's written on mine, it's not written on yours, it's $4,500 for the tap.
Study.
I want you to go ahead and vote on it, I just want it in the record that we talk to you about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chairman, ten a motion, motion approved, is it made, is it seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded, further discussion? All in favor, six, five, saying aye.
Aye.
A, that's approved. Item I, approval of write-off report.
And Mayor, you were not here, but we handed out, so we handed out the write-off report that we are now doing about quarterly, and it was the lowest you've ever seen, and she's getting her hands on it because she was not aware that you weren't here to pick it up, and everybody turned it back in, so we'll get that in front of you again. And that's something that the commission has to approve every time it's put in front of you. So the good news is it's gotten much, much less, gone way down.
Sure, I'm going to go ahead and vote, I would pass.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we second write-off. Your motion made, due to seconding, due to accept write-off order, all in favor, six, five, saying aye.
Aye.
And I will just have a motion, I will pass, all this, motion approved. And that's my pass. 7:25, we did a lot of business tonight, you did, found out a lot of things.
I think that's it, you know. You have any comments?
I haven't got my ass up. I'll tell you, I'm feeling...
There are a couple there, number 18 and 13, and both been removed.
We have some opportunity to possibly collect.
At this time, we have one individual that signed up to make a sudden comment. Ms. John, do you come forward, please, ma'am?
I'm George Lane, John, 504 Banner Road. Commissioner White, I'd like to inform you, I'm not here to start trouble. You're the Commissioners and all, I haven't announced it to me. I was at a meeting today concerning asbestos, from these plants, and now, come Saturday morning at 12 o'clock, at Delafin Tavern, at 1607 Wadis Street, they will be taking application for those that have worked at Stalpa, Montana, Union Caravans, even these shirt factories, even if you worked in housekeeping, in the nursing homes, or anything, to come and fill out an application. And if they get enough people, they will be bringing a doctor in and the x-ray, to x-ray your chest, and I would, to see if you have this asbestos. The first one that came to reference, I was in that bunch, but I didn't have asbestos. I had silica of the lung, and I, okay, that's a plus for me, okay. What I'm trying to say now, I've said this to Steve Renshaw, I'm not saying this to antagonize him. I called for them to come and do the brush at my house, not knowing that they were behind it. After I found out they were behind it, it was okay, but I did leave a message that send the bush house to cut the grass, where I can see how to get out my driveway, because the grass is taller than the brush. Well, today, I'm going around Valley Road, and for some reason or another, I don't know where, whoever was using the bush house didn't recognize where Valley Road starts, but he did exactly what I asked. To cut the grass, I can see how to get out of my driveway. But Valley Road starts at, at, at the end, coming around Valley Road, and the grass is just as tall around on the back road as it was for me to get out in the driveway. Now, I don't know who it was, Steve, and I'm not faulting you, because you cannot be with your employees every time they leave the section. But we need to let these fellows know, whoever runs the bush house, they have to cut at least four feet from the street to give us a passway in case we have to get over, for somebody to pass through, okay? So, I don't know who it was, Steve.
You'll find out.
But, hey, tell them next time, start at the end, and come on around, and then when they get up there from the smother, turn around and do the other side, because that's all Valley Road. Now, the next thing I want to ask, dear, since you all are behind, I don't think enough to limp tonight, and it's been so long, and the brush are beginning to brown and dry up, would it be permissible that I get a burning permit and set mine outside?
Can you come cut the road?
It's right there in my yard.
Next to the road?
Mm-hmm.
Put the road danger.
You need a burn permit, so you'd have to call the fire department, and they take a look at it.
Yeah, you need to come look at it, because after while, the grass is gonna be looking like it is on the backside of Valley Road, and you won't be able to see the brush.
I come tomorrow and get it.
Okay, the holes, we got brush on both sides, and all of it has turned brown. And I understand you all being behind, not having to work, you're short of help and all of that, but this is, is creating a odor, and we don't know what's crawling underneath, or what's gonna happen, or whatever, but if I can get a permit, I set mine on track.
I come tomorrow.
Okay, next thing, you say you have twenty-four thousand for the restroom at...
Twenty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-five, yeah.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, I was setting up here at the park in Recreation, me, and Thomas, and I understand you say you have fifty-two thousand grass, or fifty-two hundred?
Let's start with, Mr. Jones, we had fifty-two thousand, we used part of it, and that's what's left, now we're about to plead what we had for the sale of that property.
The sale of property.
Oh, okay.
It started at fifty-two thousand, and we built one, we built a restroom in Howard Field, that was about twenty-two thousand, this is gonna be twenty-four, so now you're just gonna have a few thousand left in that fifty-two thousand.
Right, okay, all right.
Yeah.
That's all I have to say, but tell the guy, four feet from the street, starting at the end, come over.
I don't wanna ask you a question, huh?
Yes, sir.
Is that Bellefontaine, that club Bellefontaine, is he preaching?
Thank you for having me.
Folks, any commissioners having come here? Yes, sir, I'll move with the chairman. All in favor, six and five saying aye. Aye. Aye.